I call a meeting to order at 10:05, April 1st, April Fool's Day. Those in call to order should be Mr. Hawkins.
Present.
Mr. Callen is on his way and I'm here. At this time, we'll have a moment of silence. Please stand and then a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nope. Okay, let's move to consent and approval.
Okay, today's honorations, there are 12 listings, $6,050.79 for tax years 2012, 13, and 14. Fiduciary orders as of April 1st, and you're also confirming the date of the BACIO hearing?
We'll do that separately.
Okay. Vouchers, General County Fund, $393,057.98. General County Fund Purchasing Card, $12,726.44. Cole Severance Fund, $39,775.48. Cole Severance Purchasing Card, $604.96. Kent Muffley, $1,008.45.70. Purchasing Card for Kent Muffley, $375.67. Chestnut Ridge Park, $1,0134.84. Mason Dixon Park, $62.62. Mason Dixon Park Purchasing Card, $164.18. Assessors Valuation Fund, $2,512.12. 911 Cash, $254 for total of $453,020.99.
Have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Also, what was mentioned is, and I'll just read it and then ask for a motion, that Joshua Baker Esquire filed a motion asking for a removal of personnel representative in the Mon County Commission of Examined Submotion. It is ordered that there will be a meeting on Wednesday, April 22nd, at 11 o'clock. On the above, they need an answer why submotion should not be granted. Is there a motion?
Motion to allow you to sign this, please.
Okay, and second, it's been approved. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, I'll fake signing it again. Great. Before we go to public comments, Tammy Renzelli, I hear you have a new employee that you would like to introduce.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Morning.
I'm from Preston County. I'm from Morgantown in Preston County. We have a new volunteer coroner, Johnny Kiefer, I'd like to introduce and recommend that she be hired and represent Mon County in this position.
Okay.
This is Johnny Kiefer. He's our volunteer coroner.
Do you say move?
I say move for a hearing, please.
Second, it's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes, welcome. Thank you. You're doing exceptional program that your needs, those children need your help and we appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tam. Now, we can have at 10:08 comments from the public. Is there anyone who would like to speak?
I don't have a question.
I hear he's...
I'm sorry.
Where's Sid?
Oh, I sit all day long.
Okay.
I think I hear a third party. Okay, so at this time, there is no comments? Great, okay. We're gonna move even quicker because we're right at 10:10 and Renetta doesn't have any grants today for us and no bills to pay, so we're moving forward with that. I'm talking slowly and see if he's going to... I think he disappeared. Okay, well, we can't have 10:30 yet. That's consideration. Can we do that? Because it's... The 10:30 one, or do we have to wait till... Okay, we'll wait, okay. Let's go to correspondence. Okay, a letter from West Virginia Bass Federation requesting funds.
Again, this year, they're requesting $5,000 to make the event possible. This is the ninth annual 2015 West Virginia Bass Federation Invitational Championship. It's going to be held in June in Morgantown. Days are June 27th and 28th, and they are launching at the Point Marion Pool of the Mon River in Fort Martin Rampe.
Okay.
I would move to approve this partnership.
Okay, I'll second it. It's approved, the Bass Federation, $5,000, and we've been working on keeping the locks open, so this is one more reason why we would need it. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, good. So you have it, so you're on record of it, okay. It passes. Thank you.
This is inviting... The letter was directed to invite you, a staff member, or any other commissioner as a guest to the tournament Celebrity Pro-Am, which Eldon and I went to last year.
How'd you do? Did you catch any?
She's got a bigger fish than I did. You know what mine was?
Zero.
A minute, a minute? Okay, okay, well...
I got a picture of her, she's gonna see.
Yeah, I do.
Okay, well, we'll see if anyone is interested, and we'll get back to them on that. Requisition number six, UTC Economic Opportunity Development District, the Ball Field.
Yeah, this is the amount of $1,045,027.41 to be paid to the university to reimburse them for the Ball Field project.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it passes.
Several of these need signed, so I'll just wait until...
Okay, application for payment number 12 of the Justice Center. Oh, this is Eldon's favorite time.
This is construction draw for, close your ears, $1,448,109 to Messero Corporation.
Is there a motion, Eldon?
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes.
Good news, they're running for mayor in my case.
Yeah.
I could've made the motion for you.
Yeah.
I had to serve while you were not here.
Invoice from Town of Star City for the TIP funds.
Yeah, this is requisition for payment number 11 submitted by the Town of Star City for $4,809.75 to be paid to CTO for work on their entry into Star City through their TIP funds.
This one, I'm happy to. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, it's been happily moved in second for to pay the TIP funds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes, great. Requisition for payment number 10, the UTC Infrastructure.
This is the infrastructure portion of the TIP project in the amount of $35,659.7.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes, great. Any other correspondence before we...
No.
Okay. Unfinished business, discussion of proposed increase for Republic Services. Who would like to talk on that?
I would... I know Ed has done some work on it, so he might want to include this. I have a proposal. I got numerous complaints, not just focused on the rate increase, which they don't believe is justified, but they even more don't believe it's justified because the service is so poor and they can't get response. There's been... We've got a number of complaints, and tomorrow is the protest date, and I would urge that this commission consider, file a letter of protest to include the copies of emails and letters and notes of complaints we received from all the customers that just are not getting service. How can you argue a rate increase when the service is so poor? So, Ed, you've been working on this.
Do you care to make that into a motion?
Yes, I'd make that a motion.
All right, I'll be happy to second it because I have the same copies that you have. There was a little bit... I did take these copies, too. I attended the Solid Waste Authority's meeting. I'll give a little bit more of a report, but there was discussion, and I did at least present these to them. Individually, as a board, as a function, they cannot support it as a state entity, but to a person personally, each one would stand with us in supporting this, and I will second it.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second. I agree with the sentiment of both of you. I think all three of us are very concerned about this, so let's have a vote on that. All those in favor of sending this letter of protest, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes, 3-0.
Since tomorrow's the deadline, I assume they'll take something by email?
I sent you the notice that the phone call that you can make.
Yeah.
If they don't take it by email, they'll take it by fax, I know.
Okay, yeah. Approval of amendment to 911 fee as adopted March 25th, 2015, where we had a hearing, but you want to...
This is just verifying that the commission had the public hearing that you've increased the rate from $131 to $3 to equalize it with that of the cell phone charges. This is for landlines only and all of the funds stay in Monigay County. So it's just a formal...
This is just a confirmation of our action.
Right.
Do we need to make a motion on that, or we just sign it?
Just sign it. We approved it last week.
Okay, so that's just for informational purpose. Discussion of Scheduling Committee for the Ball Field Complex. Yeah, you might want to explain that.
At the time... Well, I guess I'm the old guy here that's been here from the beginning on this. When we were doing the leases and the purchases and the management and the lease agreements and management agreements, one of the big issues was, of course, that this is a county facility, and the university, we have a lease, management lease with them. Of course, WVU's baseball would have priority. The secondary priority was to the minor league. Then we also looked at the possibility of having additional, such as American Legion baseball. Fairmont State was looking at using it.
High school.
We had high school, little league tournaments, a number of different things as well, as well as other community events. As part of the agreement that we reached, we established a scheduling committee that would be the, I guess, the catalyst or the organization to ensure that the priorities are met, but that there's maximum use of these, of the ballpark facility for community and town events. So we have two appointments to that. We can go ahead and try to make appointments, or we could follow our procedure as we've done in the past for boards and commissions that we adopted a couple of years ago, which I think is very effective because it gets a lot of different interest, and we've got people interested in serving on this. We got two slots, so it's really up to the commission whether they think we need to go ahead and advertise this and follow the procedure that we followed in the past so that we can get the appointments done. There are already people seeking use of the facilities in the fall, so we need to move pretty quickly, but if we advertise it this week, we could probably get stuff in by next week and make an appointment next week, maybe.
Today?
Okay.
There's no set term, correct?
No.
No.
At the will and the pleasure of the commission.
Right.
I can do that.
I don't really... I don't think we'll need... I think if we're all three in agreement, that let's just post it and then do the interviews, if that's all ever... Okay, so we'll... That's fine.
So we'll shoot for applications before next week.
Right.
And try to set up a couple of interviews next week, and then make appointments the following week.
And it's two people that we...
We have two appointments.
Yeah, we have two appointments.
WVU has two appointments. Granville, do you have an appointment for the scheduling?
Not a word, sir.
Not that... I can't remember. Who was the other one, Bobby? You remember? There was five on the committee. WVU... Oh, the minor league has one.
Minor league.
Minor league has one.
Right.
WVU has two, and we have two.
Correct. Okay, good. Okay, any other unfinished business?
No.
Okay, great. We're gonna move on. Still not 10:30 yet. We're gonna move on to new business, appointment to the Metropolitan Theater Commission until April 15th, 2016. We had discussed making an appointment, and you said you were willing to take that appointment. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Would you like...
I would move to appoint Commissioner Hawkins to that term.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
No discussion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, okay. Do we have the proposed estoppel agreement, or is that still... Okay, that is still in the works.
I talked to Rocky day before yesterday. They're in full understanding, and of course, Phil was a filmmaker who wasn't totally aware of the status of the bankruptcy and all. Rocky Gianolos is our attorney on that bankruptcy thing. Although, on the face of it, it doesn't look problematic. There are some issues because of the bankruptcy and some of the claims developed in the bankruptcy at Longview that we want to fix it, and Rocky has advised me that the attorney for Longview and the bankruptcy courts are understanding of our concerns and are willing to change the estoppel agreement once they finalize it.
Okay, so again, we're just waiting for finalization by the attorneys to say that we can now sign it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll just hold off on that one. Is there any other new business? Seeing none? Okay, are there any reports from elected officials? Okay, any reports from department heads? I like this, this is a great... Moving quickly forward. See, once we did the budget, everyone's now... Now they don't come back. Okay, moving forward, we won't have the executive session yet. Reports from county commissioners, I did Ed last time. Eldon, would you like to go?
I just have something real quick. And Mark's not here, I wish Mark was here. We had supported Mark in helping to pay for a tax attorney to deal with these public privates, which are... They've been around for a long time, but for Monigay County and West Virginia, they're new, and they're new in the areas of established West Virginia law as well. I would... Now, we set up a system because we're as board of review, and this would continue to apply to where we contributed half of the funds, but we did not... They were not our council. They were like the assessors' council. Given the complexities of these public-private and the importance of the issues that relate to the public-private, I would like to propose, and we could run it by Mark, I haven't had a chance to discuss it with Mark, but I don't think you'll have a problem with that, propose that we continue that offer to pay 50/50 on any outside counsel or special tax counsel that he could use in dealing with this recent lawsuit filed against him on these public privates. That's my thoughts. I would like to make that a motion that we continue to support him by providing 50% of the funds for an outside attorney to fight this case.
I would happily second it, mostly because I'm really in favor of making sure that you have the specialty individual that is qualified to do and give the advice necessary.
I agree. I think it's a great idea, and it's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, it passes. If you've just... Do you want to die into contact, or do you want to...
Yeah, we'd probably sit down with Mark and check again.
Okay, well, Mark can explain that. Okay. Okay, we're still at 10:25. Is there any other report you would like to...
That's all I have, really.
I did meet with the Solid Waste Authority. That was on Monday.
Okay.
As you can see in the paper, they are liquidating. They will continue to liquidate. That's going to be done. What's interesting is that they actually had a request that they said I should bring to you, that Main Carrier, which is another carrier out in the Caspul, I believe, area, they wish to discuss the recycling, possibly offering a potential for another site with you regarding... And that they also have put forth a proposal, and this is here, that they would like to open another transfer station. Now, this is good in that it would mean that the monopoly of the one transfer station in this county would have competition. So that has to go through the Solid Waste Authority, but you know, that is something that's going to be explored, and we have the number for them to get in contact regarding recycling. Second, oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I would like that. I would like to get moving on that pretty quickly if we could.
We were informed by people that were there, citizens, that sometimes you're turned away. You're not only turned away, sometimes you're waiting an hour or two hours because there is a maximum amount that can be accepted, and I believe it's on a monthly basis, and then they average it out, and if you are the last guy waiting, you're just being turned away.
Right.
So, I have met with one fire chief so far. The discussion was excellent and did have some suggestions. Talent Gown Meeting, which I attended representing us yesterday. Good presentation by Dan Kimmel. That was on the economic summit. Bill Austin also reported on the studies that we reported on last week, but the big announcement here is from Glenn Kelly announcing that there will be a new shuttle at the airport. So things... And that the access road that is going to access the National Guard Armory is being close to opening back up again for its completion. In other words, what we have to do there is to put the last coat on and then paint the lines on the guardrails and everything else. Lastly, there's a meeting that I was asked to attend, and with commission's blessing, I will represent us, in Preston County. They already have a meeting set up with the Department of Highways. They are proposing a similar effort to privatize some work and are willing to set funding aside. I know we still have funding that was set aside a year ago in the amount of $50,000, even though it may be, was rejected by the DOH. I would attend that meeting at 2:00 tomorrow, with your pleasure.
I'd move you to represent us at the meeting.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
And just for clarification, the transfer station would be opened by this new company?
This is a new...
Oh, okay.
This is... Well, it's a new...
I mean...
It's an established carrier.
Right.
Okay, in other words, Main, I actually followed one of their trucks yesterday. Main Carrier is the individual who are making the proposal to see if they can get... Like I said, it has to be approved by the Solid Waste Authority, and they're in favor of it locally, then it has to go to the state.
They wouldn't have a problem with us having them over for a work session.
That's what I was saying.
Oh, I don't believe so.
I think after it was approved, why don't we...
The meeting went exceedingly well.
I'd like to have this carrier there to see what we could do in a work session, in since the Solid Waste Authority's in favor of it, I just want to make sure they didn't have a problem with us meeting separately with them.
I believe they're thoroughly in favor of this.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I would recommend that we have it in a work session after it's approved by the PSC, so then that...
Oh, I'd have it before. I'd have it before. I'd like to have it before to decide what our position might be, because we might want to take a formal position on it, just like we did on the rate increase.
For encouragement.
To encourage the PSC.
Okay.
That's my thoughts.
Yeah.
I mean, we can't take any official position because we don't have the jurisdiction to take any official position, but we can at least get a flavor as to whether this is something that we support, strongly support, or oppose.
Okay, that's fine. If we could just have that material, just so all three of us could have it before.
Represent it, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. So if you want to contact and then see what would be available probably sometime in April.
Okay. When are they going before the Public Service Commission?
I don't believe it was stated.
Yeah, okay. Great. 10:29. Well, wait, no, no, wait, wait, wait.
I was gonna check.
10:28, yeah, no, sorry, we have to wait, okay.
10:28, yeah.
All three of us were fortunate, we attended a meeting this morning by the chamber, and we had our legislators from not only Monigay County, but Marin County and Preston County, or Taylor County.
Taylor County.
There to talk about the legislative session. It was very clear that the concern from the community was, and I believe they heard, roads. In fact, I just say three words, roads, roads, potholes, if that's one word. One of the things that came out was an idea, and I want to throw this out, would it be worth the three of us sending a letter to those legislators to state that... They admitted that they needed something to be done. My concern, and I think all our concern, is if we wait till next year, you have six more months, then we're in a election year, so we don't know what's gonna happen. I would like a letter sent to our legislators saying that they all counties endorse a special session for an emergency session to discuss immediate paving or repairing of current roads. Would that be something that you would consider?
Yeah, I think we could...
I'm gonna ask.
I think we could compose a letter, I mean, Senator Williams, Senator Bob Williams wanted proposed having a interim session dedicated solely to roads and/or quote "infrastructure", and that's the difficulty they run into being in Charleston. That's the difficulty. Roads are part of the key infrastructure that we have deficiencies in here, but roads are sort of the surface of what we see. Other counties don't have the same road difficulties that we have because they don't have the same traffic, they don't have the same demands on their roads, but they do have poor roads and problem roads, but they have deficiencies in infrastructure. So I think it would be good, we could have a letter, and Diane's very good at drafting letters, I guess, draft a letter to encourage support, and we could even send a copy to the governor and all, and curry in the leadership as well of our own delegation.
Right.
To support Senator Williams' proposal of having an interim session dedicated nothing to nothing but roads and state infrastructure.
Sounds excellent.
So, you make that as a motion?
No, I...
Yeah.
Second, and I will suggest that to the individuals that I'll be seeing tomorrow in Preston County, as they have the exact same concerns.
I think that's a great idea. I think what my concern, I think all three of our concerns, is you can have discussions and the Blue Ribbon Report, but we need action now, and we need to do something in the next several months, because even the budget that they pass doesn't go into effect till July. So we need to do something now which is improving not only the safety of the roads, but repairing of the roads, and I look at it as an economic survival for Monigay County, and I believe Preston County, too, is also concerned. So I think it's a great idea. I think at least people say, "Well, what are you doing? We're asking for their support." Maybe we can get that moved forward. So it's been properly moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, thank you, I think that's a great idea. Now, it is past 10:30, so I can come back to consideration of approval for federal income tax purposes of the issuance by the Mon County Building Commission of not more than $58 million in principal amount of refunding and improving revenue bonds for Mon Health System and Monigay County General Hospital Company to refund and redeem its outstanding 2005 bonds and finance renovations to the hospital's operating suite. At this time, we will allow any person who wants to speak on this issue to state their name and where they live, and you have three minutes, and we look forward to hearing from you. So at this time, this hearing's open. Is there anyone who would like to speak at this? Aye.
Hi, Commissioners. My name's Tanya Willis Miller. I'm with Jackson Kelly. We're bond counsel for the Mon County Building Commission's...
Could I have your address, too, please?
253 Palisades Drive, Morgantown.
That's mine, thank you.
4150 Clay Street. This is purely for the Internal Revenue Code. The commission is not in any way obligated. There's no specific authorization required by the commission. It's just that under the Internal Revenue Code, because the building commission is appointed by you, they need to come and say to you, "We've authorized this." They had a public hearing last night, no one appeared, and we have a resolution to present for your records to that effect, and so they're asking you. We have Keith Pappas, the chairman, and Daryl Rosenkranz, the CFO of Mon General, who can address any questions you may have.
Okay. So you said, okay, once we have this hearing, you also have a resolution that we need to? Or would that be for next?
It's on the back.
Okay.
The required public hearing was held last night by the building commission.
Right.
This is just coming to you for final approval.
This is just coming to you for final approval. We're not really having a public hearing on this.
Oh, okay.
It's not really affected as public hearing.
Since it was last night?
Yes.
Okay.
Keith, you're the chairman there now. Maybe he could address.
Sure, good. What we've been asked to do is to facilitate the issuance of a bond for the benefit of the Montague General Hospital. And we've passed an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a new 2015 bond for $58 million and it refinances a 2005 A series that we had done back in 2005 when I was still a chair on board. And that was about a $61 million issuance. And it's been, there's been principal reduction down to about $54 million in the last decade. And what's been presented to us is some financials and some commentary by the CFO of the hospital that this refunding and refinance will save them about $400,000 a year, I believe. Is that right, Daryl?
Yes, Daryl Rosenkranz. I'm Chief Financial Officer of the Health System, Fleming, West Virginia is my home. Yes, this is a refinancing. The 2005 had a first call date, meaning that's the first period of time when we could actually call these bonds and refinance them. But the interest rates, I mean, most people consider this almost like a mortgage. You'd be like refinancing your mortgage and that's simply what we're doing is refinancing. Interest rates are very low at this time. As Keith mentioned, it's $400,000 of annual cash flow savings, total of $8 million over the 20 years that the bonds are still outstanding. If there's any other questions, I'd be happy to.
You're picking up an additional $4 million?
Picking up an additional $5 million. We have a CON, yeah, we have a CON approved project through the West Virginia Healthcare Authority to renovate our ORs. It's about $11.4 million project and this will finance about half of that project. And again, due to the interest rates environment and the additional cash that we can, I guess, we're going to be issuing about $50 million of total principal on the bonds and paying off 54, so.
Okay. Thank you.
To summarize also, we've also, we've engaged an entity, Dinsmore and Schultz. David Thomas is here with me today. He's counsel for the issuing entity, which is the building commission. Jackson Kelly is representing the hospital. United Bank will be the trustee of the bonds. The bonds will be sold to an underwriter, which is Goldman Sachs. And we understand, is there going to be debt reserve?
No, there's no debt, no debt service.
It's not required, so we don't have a debt reserve. We'll be able to use these funds for healthcare reasons, which we thought was a common good for our community. So we've agreed to do this for the hospital.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone else who'd like to speak on it? I appreciate the clarification. So if anyone will be able to watch the program, they'll understand what's going on. So it says consideration approval of federal income tax. So do we still have to?
Yeah, we move, I move to approve the issuance as outlined in the authorizing ordinance adopted by the Montague County Building Commission.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay. Thank you for your conditional, or for your support continually in helping Mon County.
Let's meet with Bill Hennessy.
Yeah. Bill Hennessy, yes, we'll be happy. Also, my aunt would be very pleased, Zelda Weiss. So she, it's just a nice continuation.
Last time I had an operation up there, the radio didn't work in the OR. Dr. King said after they put me under, I sang to him for an hour.
That's torture right there. That would be very torturous. Yeah. Yeah. There was a couple scars, whoops, a couple times. Let's make sure, is there anything else that we need besides the signing? Okay. Before we close, we have an executive session. We have two issues that we have to deal with under 6-9A-4. Do I have a motion to go in executive session?
The only question I have is which category is it under?
Personnel.
Okay, personnel?
Yes.
Okay, so it's under personnel, which is what, two, I think?
Okay.
Two, A or B?
Two A.
Two A, okay, under two A?
There's also, will also be, because we're meeting with the health department, could be contracts too.
Contracts would be nine, I believe.
Yeah, I think it's section nine. So we have, so we're covered under both?
I would move to go in the execution section for personnel issue and a contract issue under West Virginia Code 69A4, paragraph two and paragraph nine.
Second.
Okay, been properly moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're in executive session for a short amount of time. Okay, do I have a motion to go out of executive session?
Move to return, to come out of executive session, back to regular session.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're in regular session. I heard there was a person who wanted to speak and you have the information?
Just the new commander, I didn't catch his, I didn't look up.
Alan Atkins.
He has been a commander for eight months here in Morgantown.
Okay.
And he would like to invite you to their annual civic dinner. It's on Thursday, April 9th at 6 o'clock. The national commander is David Jeffrey. He's going to be the speaker. He's actually from Morgantown, so he thought maybe he'd be one of 10.
Would that be at the?
That's at the Hotel Morgan.
Oh, okay.
And I'll make you, I'll make you a copy of this and I'll send you an email.
Send this email, let's do this thing. That's what I put it on my computer.
He did ask for RSVP.
Yes.
Hopefully, you know.
When is RSVP?
Well, this is April 1st, which is today, but he said in the next, in the next couple of days, he said that we can call him and let him know.
Oh, okay, when is it?
It's the 9th.
Oh, the baseball stadium.
Yes, 6 o'clock Thursday.
She related to Dale Atkins?
I didn't ask, yes.
He's related?
I was going to say, you're related?
That was your question to ask.
Okay, is there any, is there anything else you have? Okay, if not, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Sub move.
Second.
It's properly moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We be adjourned.